I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, could you mind leading us in a part, please?
Dear Himalayan Father, we thank and praise you for the beautiful change of season that we're seeing outside now. We just pray that you extend that warmth and niceness for a while before we go through the next season. And we pray that you watch over the activities of the meeting tonight. We can make wise choices on behalf of our citizens and choices that are pleasing to you. Your name is great.
All right, a reading on approval of medicine September twentieth.
Motion to approve and suspend the reading.
Motion by, oh, second, and second by Hiller. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Prove of the agenda, any changes or additions to the agenda? Move to approve the agenda. Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Consultation with attorney and engineer, so five A engineer report. Monty's got that up on the board, we'll have. Copy.
And the biggest thing Jared brought up was the fact that he's trying to get the schedules for this water tank project, when they're going to get started or any of that stuff. And then he did know down there, there is funding through the federal government for replacing a lead service line, so he was going to put that into our drinking water state revolving fund questionnaire thing, that that might be something we want to look into in the future.
Got you, anything for us?
We'll likely get some updates maybe in the meeting tomorrow, I suspect. And there won't be a meeting tomorrow because there is no construction schedules yet, so.
Good enough.
Yep, so there, there won't have a construction meeting tomorrow.
Well, I was not going to show up anyway, but I have time allocated. I have me time.
Okay, five B, Indy Street Project lighting public input meeting.
Yeah, after the last meeting there was a talk about the difference. It's the street lighting with the dual heads out from Apple Drive West to Main Street wasn't supported by the development out there. We had the option of going that at a fifty-fifty cost share, going to just path lights along there, or if we want, we just don't do any lights out there. But the path portion is still going in from tenth through twelfth avenue out there by TSC. So basically, to do the streetlights from Maine to Apple, the cost share for the city would be forty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and change. If we just do the path lights, which is at a ninety-ten cost share, our cost would be fifteen thousand thirty-five. Had they approved doing it the original way with the streetlights at the ninety-ten, we'd have paid eighty-five hundred for our share. So I guess the ball is in your court.
So the path lights would be similar to what we have on the street going up to the supermarket along the path there?
Yeah, they'd be the ornamental lights.
Ornamental lights.
Yeah.
Versus overhead double masked streetlights.
Right.
Ornamental is kind of probably long-term though, because they're, yeah, they're functional. I would still like to see at least that, if nothing else, the sunlighting on that path.
Well, no, currently on the, on the street, all the way out to Tractor Supply, there is, there is lighting on the south side of the road, correct?
On Highway two hundred?
Yeah.
No.
No.
No. There is nothing from the hub west. There's one pool past the hub, and then there's no more street lighting out there.
You're talking on Highway two hundred? Okay. Okay. Gotcha.
And even that Fremont Road from Jimmy's to TSC, there's nothing on there.
Oh, there was on that one there.
You don't have over by your.
You're showing the corner.
And you see there's one.
Jimmy's, Jimmy's corner on the south side of the road.
Yeah.
And there might be one.
There's a street light.
At your bus and barn there.
There's a street light at your corner.
Yeah, his corner, yeah.
Yeah. And then the other one is the street lighters. There isn't one on the corner going to TSC.
No, there is one though, at the corner by Workover Solutions, I believe. And Mandate there.
Yeah. So was our, was our intention originally it was for lighting so that people could be walking that path during, during dark hours and stuff like that?
I think the only intention word we ever used was safety. It's more lighting for, safer pedestrian use, safe for vehicle. And that's why I told we'd go the overhead lights all the way from the hub to the Crowsey's corner. Apparently that's not feasible, so.
So we annexed certain properties for the sole purpose of application for this grant, really.
Right.
So, yeah, when you said, yeah, the answer was yes. What's the purpose? That would be the original intent.
Right, yeah. So at the ninety-ten cost share, we would still get lighting on Highway two hundred from the hub to Jimmy's?
Correct.
And then if we want to go from Jimmy's West along the bike path, that's still ninety-ten?
No. If we do the path lighting, it's ninety-ten.
So Jimmy's, Jimmy's West becomes path lighting as opposed to.
Right. And I, yeah. I'd be fine with doing that, nothing else.
I would be too.
That's hard. This is too expensive for us to do the highway lighting from Jimmy's out.
Yeah, it'd be hard for us to release taxpayer money for that.
So we'd need a motion then, and soon Monty, that's the way you want to proceed?
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like, I'll make that motion that we do it with the, the pathway lighting from Jimmy's out to Tractor Supply on that particular option. Except the shared use path lighting option.
Yep.
Okay, a motion by Pillar. Second, and second by Stern, discussion. So then on the pathway, TSC wise, is it going to go like right beside our sign then? Is that going to be the path there?
No, it'll stop at twelfth avenue, where you make the corner between Fast and Hall, and it'll, it'll basically head in right there. And then you'll just have to take that road to the street to get the parking lot or the other side.
Yeah, that'd be good. Don't start to get too busy if we kept.
Is that going to work for you, Buster?
It's going to be a lot better than the way it is right now.
And we have motion within seconds, any more discussion? And then two, you know, even if we're going to light this area, is there a way to get the pathway, you know, from, from, I mean, from bridge to bridge? Like two? Part of this? That would be awesome. I don't think the highway, I don't think DOT will pay for this, it's so far off the highway. But you'd be the one that goes by the little baseball field there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree, that would be nice. And I, you know, I think wiring is the biggest issue. Maybe we could find a solar option for lighting along there, so we don't have to trench wire cable, but. I, I like that idea too, actually. We do that, but.
Yeah, that would be something on our own, whether it's with Jared or somebody.
Or yeah, having people watch or grant money for something like that.
I don't know if that would be under, because I just got the letter on the Safe Roads to School thing again too. I can check with Jared to see if that would be something that might work for me.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good idea though.
Buster wants to offer something.
Well, one of the, no, just in regard to Casey's comment. I just saw in the paper, for instance, that Bismarck got an eight-hundred thousand dollar outdoor rec grant to refurbish some parks. So I think in regard to Casey's project, that would be a project that would probably fall underneath something.
That's right, goes right by that North Star Two Park and baseball field and connects to.
Absolutely.
Dog park.
Yeah.
Whatever.
You're talking about lighting along that path?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that would be nice. Person, person should, you know, like, well, according to what I read in the paper this morning now, that they submitted that application over a year ago. So a person would need to make sure you watch for some of those things.
Right.
You know, but yeah. I think that certainly would be a hell of a.
Yeah.
Project.
Yeah, I agree with that. I would really like to see that lit up, that'd be great.
So you don't fall in the crack. Yes, Dave.
Speaking of the lighting, like on the walking path, that one light is out by Cory Baker's shop, right on Main Street and nine. And we tried, I think when Barry was still here, changing the bulb, but it didn't light up by Dr. Mark. And he figures there's a ballast in it that's burnt out in the bulb. There's one other light that's out now. You know, if it'd be possible, get a bid and convert that whole walking path over to LED lighting. Actually, there's three out there. Is there three of them?
Buster doesn't sleep too much.
He, he works for my team quite often. I know I talked to Mark and he was always going to repair that one and he was going to.
Would you visit Mark and see if he had a bid on LEDs?
I think some of the conversion of the bulb was probably cheaper than buying that ballast. And expensive bulb that's in the pit. And they're slowly dying a lot of the time.
Change them over, done for twenty years, but.
They're going to look, they want to get a price back for their guys.
We have a motion and a second, anywhere discussion. Your call.
Well, Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Aye, motion buried, thank you. Five C, employee.
No, it was just to remind you that, that public input meeting is Thursday night from five-thirty to seven-thirty, open house. The formal presentation is at six. That's with DOT and Ackerman Eschbold is the engineer on the Indy Street project.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
Is that here, Monty?
Yes.
Six o'clock, yeah, open house is five-thirty. Oh, they're going to talk about the box culvert for the new, the new pedestrian grassing too.
Yeah, they'll, they'll talk about the entire project, yeah.
Thanks for the reminder.
It's where?
Here at City Hall. Here at City Hall.
Okay, five C, employee policy update.
Well, at the request of President Obenauer, I went out and I found a pretty, pretty decent, I think, COVID policy used by King County, Washington. Did some doctoring up, eliminated a few things out of there that aren't relevant to us. Basically, if we want to proceed under our policy, it would be two readings before it would go into effect. If you want to move forward with it, I would send it out to all the employees, and they would have time to comment, and then we would next hear it, kind of like ordinance change. We would next hear it, and after the event, first meeting in November.
I guess, I guess one of the reasons why this is prompt, obviously, you know, it's, it's not going away. And I think every day it seems like there's a new situation. And, you know, we have an employee that calls like, "Monty, my kid was a close contact and my wife's sick now," or we had another employee in the office that was out for a while. We don't have, they didn't go by, we're shooting from the hip. And I think that's why we give something on paper, something we can follow, something we hand out to the employees. Obviously, we want everybody to input. This isn't going to be a, this isn't, two tablets coming out of the mountain. So we can change this or any way we feel. I think it's not going away, and we just need some way to, and we're probably one of the twenty-five percent of cities that don't have this on our books right now. So I think it's a good idea to get one in this direction. So if you guys would please, you probably already have looked at it, and if you have comments tonight, great. But I'd like to get it out to our employees, so it can kind of all be on the same page. I think there's a lot of hearsay as well. I talked to one of our employees the other day who was sounding pretty sick. I talked to him at the post office, and I said, "Have you been tested?" He goes, "I'm afraid so." Well, I, I get it, but, you know, I think we, and maybe he didn't know what happens if he is just a close contact. If it's, is it a week, is it seven days, is it ten days? Who knows? Anyhow, some good information here, I think we need to look at and adopt something. So if you guys have comments, please share them. And then we'll get it out to our staff and let them make comments as well. So we don't need action tonight, we don't have to have action tonight.
If you want to proceed, we'll get it out to them.
Yeah. Do we have any brilliant reason why not to do something like this? Are you okay with moving forward and getting it out to the staff to look at? All right, then Monty, if you would do that, that would be great. How do you want to do that?
I'll, I might just put the actual copies in with their payroll this week.
Okay.
I think that'll work the best.
Dave, would you talk to your staff, let them know if you want your staff to?
Yep.
Figure that out. Good deal. All right. And Pat, have you seen it?
I did.
Okay, what are your thoughts, Stern?
I like it.
Okay, all right.
I know how it can affect the small business. One person gets infected and the whole business is out of business for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, and it's happening. Okay, moving on, unless there's any other comments about, about the employee policy update. Um, we got a hall request for, for Lions for benefit.
That was yesterday.
That was on there yesterday, and they did a great job. It tasted wonderful, as usual.
Do you want to keep doing these through the board for these benefits? Or if it's a benefit to, if we're not booked, do you just want it approved? Kind of like they did with.
I'm not sure why we do it to the board, because we approve all of them.
I was going to say in twelve years, I don't think I'll remember it.
Yeah. And now this one's approving after the fact. Or what, you know, I'm not going to approve it, but it's after the fact already because it came in between the meetings, so.
It's probably good to mention as well that, then in advance also, you know, there's October twenty-fourth, Lions already have another.
Doing another.
Although that's, that's not here though, that one's not, that's at the hospital, that's right, so.
Okay, forget that one.
Yeah.
We'll let their board do that. I, I would have no issue dealing with the office, if we're not booked.
I mean, we, if you just want to approve or authorize our staff to approve something for benefit, you know, these other ones, just a fundraiser or whatever, I would say could still come here because, you know, we get those other fundraiser ones where they're basically having a meeting and.
Yeah. If we could grant you that power, then.
Maybe we could coordinate.
Oh, really? Okay.
I'm not sure.
We'll, we'll just take.
Took a look at it? Okay, all right. All right, water sewer reports.
Nothing reported.
What's that? Oh, that's right. So we just had no report on water sewer, but now we're going to go condemnation on three-ten fourth avenue northwest, thanks Nancy.
I did speak with Lauren this afternoon, just before five. He has not had any contact with Chantel or Mr. Goldberg. I talked to them, like I put in the notes late last week and gave them Lauren's number to try and, I don't know if it works for me to try and coordinate some of these, or if they're better off getting a hold of each other. But Lauren's suggestion was this, since we didn't actually get together yet, if it can be postponed till the next meeting, and basically, if there's no action, we proceed with the condemnation, or if you want to proceed now, or, I mean, it's been months again already.
Well, the last, this is a month ago they're here, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So they, they kind of wanted to know what Lauren deemed repairable or unrepairable.
What needed to be done to bring it up to standard, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't want to take action until we hear a, Lauren thinks.
Now, I'd like, I'd like to make sure that they're, they're in contact with one another.
And you might have to be the rammer.
Okay, I'll keep trying, yeah.
Okay.
You know, they may, they may try calling, get no answer, but don't leave a message, you know, type thing or whatever. It's hard to know what's going on behind the scenes. But we do, I, I'd like to see it happen sooner than later.
But we have to keep an eye on it because it could stretch out for another two years.
Well, it won't, we'll, we'll make sure of that, yeah.
Well, we've still got the other one that hasn't moved his trailer houses out yet, so it does happen.
Right. But we know, we know in each meeting that Monty's having dialogue there, so.
But it does happen, so.
Trying.
Yeah, and that one is, at least, okay, well.
I had a message about today on that one, and then you're back, so.
You want?
Yeah.
All right. So.
I will try to get them together, I'll get them, try to get them together so we have something for the next meeting.
Thank you. Street cemetery, Dave?
Busy sweep of the lake, they were out all day today, both sweepers, so. Also, I would take a little big break just to let more calls, so we're not doing the same street over and over.
It's windy on Wednesday, so.
That should bring.
Thursday, Friday. How is that old white vacuum truck working?
Well, we kind of glued it back together again. It's starting to develop issues, so that's going to be something we're going to have to look at.
We need to get, we need to get that on, on our.
Budget for next year, year after, or whatever, I could start watching, kind of seeing what a deep couple-year-old, three- or four-year-old machine would be.
Well, that was an eighty, eighty-something mile.
Early eighties.
Yeah.
So yeah, it's getting tighter.
I know, I know. Finance, bussing. Concrete looks nice over there. Yeah, I just asked Molly about it, so I don't really know much about it. Are they about done, Monty?
Yeah, I think you're pretty well done.
I saw them work on Saturday, I think I saw them working away, so.
Yeah, I think they planned on that treatment Saturday, because they were just finishing the sprinklers and stuff Friday when they were in town.
Police fire forestry.
Um, the only thing I have is we got to tour the new fire truck today. So that was kind of exciting to see that. Um, it, it is a nice looking truck, and I think they really appreciate it, so. But yeah, that's all I have.
No, I've been, that was with me, I've been in contact to do a story on the fire trucks. So Nancy and Jason were there as well.
We've got a ride in it, so, yes, go around town a little bit.
What's, uh, what's the status of the old police vehicle?
I'm not sure. Haven't talked to them.
You know.
We are waiting to see, because there were some issues with the two thousand sixteen. So they were talking about, they may try to take some parts out for fifteen to make repairs on the sixteen. But the, the plan is still to sell it, post it for bids and sell it all. Depends on what they come up with.
Is Hazen Motors working on that?
Yeah.
HCD.
So we're continuing to plot ahead on the coal community's grants. And when I say grants, they're actually, they're, um, all three of them are kind of coming out of a separate bucket, really, in terms of where we're at. One of the things is that, you know, as part of this, the state also is going to be putting in what is considered a regional grant, okay? Looking at, um, the different regions across the state, and you know, at least the preliminary discussion, let's put it that way. Uh, because this hasn't been really confirmed, confirmed up yet, but part of the plan was to look at bringing natural gas, moving natural gas from the Bakken to eastern North Dakota. And originally, the plan was to either look at using the Highway two corridor or dropping down south and using the Highway two hundred corridor. Um, and part of the, some of the discussion was, is if they drop down, they won't have to cross as much water. And what they do is it come down, at least the tentative discussion was, is then they hook up and go up under the river at Washburn and go up that direction, then toward Grant Parks, because Washburn already has natural gas. So there's that, there's that piece, and that is actually, there was a billion dollars in the, in total nationwide for what they're going to look at submitting, which is to build back better portion of this rescue money, okay? We are going, we are continuing to move forward on our proposal, uh, which was to look at bringing natural gas into our area from Van Olen area. Originally, when we had some preliminary numbers on that in wrong figures, you know. You know, to do the whole Enquada at the time was about maybe twenty-seven, twenty-eight million. Well, since that time, we have had a phone call with the region representative from Denver, out of the Denver office. And, uh, for instance, the economic adjustment piece that we were looking at utilizing, which was the bucket that we were going after, uh, had a total dollar amount available of five hundred million, while, uh, North Dakota share of that is probably going to be about twenty million. And our local share, if we were to get something, is probably going to be about five. So needless to say, when, um, uh, we were on the phone with the gal from Denver, a little bit of a gut check. So we were probably in a position where we're going to be changing some of our plan in terms of the design, because we were anticipating if we'd be able to probably be fortunate enough on a fly per thirty and get the line to come in from Van Olen plus Hazen Dula. Well, to do the infrastructure for Hazen and Dula, that was about, that was estimate was about a five million dollar estimate. So we're going to change course, I think, and see if we could still do that with the hope then that maybe the state's project will end up coming down two hundred.
Would that come, like a kill there and across them, Buster?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure exactly of the, of where the route did, would be Jerry. Uh, which of course would help us tremendously because, uh, much shorter hookup distance then. Uh, or, you know, the other thing would be, there's anticipation that possibly we might get to the point where some of the breaks right now because of regulations, that's what we've been told anyway. It's part of the reason we can't use gas coming out of DGC. And it's a different form of gas, you know. And so possibly if, when they, if they were ever, when they make the switch to hydrogen, possibly then. And so possibly if, when they, if they were ever, when they make to switch to hydrogen, possibly then something maybe could be done that way, so. So it's, it's, uh, it's kind of a project, uh, in the works, let's put it that way. So in addition to that, we also are submitting out of another bucket, which is travel and tourism. That's a seven hundred and fifty million dollar bucket. And our share here in this area is two million. So one of the things we had talked about there was trying to see if we could possibly, uh, do something with the mine hills. Possibly get a convention center, uh, started up there. So we would have something between both, both areas, Hazen and Dula, yeah, so we could host some big regional events. That, of course, too, is a, is a much smaller number than what we originally anticipated would might happen. And then the last bucket of dollars that we're looking at is submitting a STEM grant, uh, which is science, technology, engineering, and I'm not sure if the last one is, Dan, you remember what?
Mathematics.
Math, mathematics. And part of what that is, is for retraining, retraining of workforce. And with the idea that, uh, a site maybe would go in and do for that, to accommodate some of that. And part of the discussion is, is Dula is already, has already made a commitment to refurbish their city hall in terms of updating with, it with latest technology and whatever to the tune of like three hundred thousand dollars. And so part of it would be is, is they probably look at using their city hall as that satellite. Uh, kind of, you kind of think of it as a, a B, a B S C thing, you know, we have the, at B S C, for instance, we have the girls that, uh, or I, let's put it this way, we have the program where we train the nurses in Hazen, okay? This would be something that would be similar to, to that possibly at onsite, so. So there's a, like I said, there's a lot of moving parts to all of this. The other part of it is, of course, is, is that, uh, for the travel and tourism grant, that deadline date is the twelfth of October. And for the other one, it's the nineteenth of October.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, yeah, and so we actually have two people hired. Uh, McGedd moved forward and gave the okay to hire a grant writer for the big grant. And then, uh, she knew somebody who would be, was willing to help with the travel and tourism one. So he's come on board and is, and is focusing, uh, on that part of it. And so, um, we're continuing to progress along, so. I'm not sure what our, you know, what our, how successful will be or whatever, but.
Gotta try.
Gotta try. At least, the other thing, I guess, you know, if you look at it from the standpoint of the bucket being half full or the glass being half full, at least we'll have a document in place, uh, if there's ever more dollars coming. Now, the other thing is, is, you know, we're still not certain about how all of these dollars are gonna fit in with the governor's, uh, Build Back Better, you know, the infrastructure piece that was going to come out of the legacy fund that went heavy, you know, so. So I think our, our best hope would be, uh, I mean, if somehow we could convince the right people that, that gas line should come down two hundred, that would be a real, probably a real benefit to us.
Who do we need to lobby for that, Buster?
Well, uh, we're going to the Capitol on Thursday to have a powwow.
Sure, good. You and Beaver?
Yeah, and Kerry Cuddy, the gal who's helping write the grant, yeah. To just have, have some conversation and discussions and maybe, maybe we'll be able to get a little bit more inside idea as to what the state is planning because, you know, that was a couple of weeks ago already when we heard that first proposal about, um, Highway two, Highway two versus two hundred, and I haven't, and that was from Brent Bogart, you know, but I haven't heard anything since. Uh, and he's, he's been working, uh, quite closely with people on the hill as well as other developers. And I do know I was at an economic development meeting in Minot last Thursday. And Minot is submitting an application on their own as well. So, so I think that there are, uh, and they're not necessarily doing the coal communities piece, okay? But they're looking at the build back better portion of it possibly as well, too, so. And I know out in the northeast, they're also looking at it, so. So the dollars are gonna get, okay, they're gonna get spread out pretty.
But it'd still be a game changer financially for us if that gas line came down two hundred and our, our connection is right in our backyard versus coming from Van Owen.
You know, the thing about it is, is that we would be fortunate enough to acquire that and, uh, and, uh, we could get the infrastructure put in for natural gas in our two cities, you know. That'd be, that would be a great start, of course, realize that there still would be some pretty good expenditure over and above that in terms of what would need to happen before. I mean, even, I think even internally in the city.
Well, it'd be like our water department. We have a, we'd have a gas, we'd have a dedicated person for, for that as well.
You know, and one of the things that I, that I had asked about, and I don't know, I, I don't understand enough of the infrastructure of this. But you're decommissioning of the water building over here? That might be a consideration for if we do get gas. That that might be a location for, I don't know if you need a big building or what you need or however that works, you know. But I, I'd certainly keep it in the back pocket before you make, you know, too many drastic decisions about what you're gonna do.
Sure. All right, questions for Buster?
The only thing that I would add, Kerry, is this, is that, so, the, the first application is the nineteenth of, of October. Then you'll find out whether your, your application made like the first step. And then, uh, the next portion of it is due in March. So.
And the one on the nineteenth, that's when that Kerry cutting writing, correct, yeah? All right, thanks, Buster. Ten A, uh, Mercer County Sheriff's Office jail agreement, uh, changes. Monty, you want to tell us the main changes and what the price difference would be?
Actually, there is no change. It's still twenty-five dollars per, for the first day of housing of, uh, people arrested by the city. Uh, nursing staff requirements, fifteen dollars per sick call, twenty dollars for each fourteen-day evaluation, these are all unchanged. This new agreement includes the Prison Rape Prelimination Act of two thousand and three, which wasn't in the previous agreement. And it takes, it takes it from an annual agreement or bi-annual agreement to a, basically a lifetime agreement. Either party can opt out on thirty-day notice.
Questions, comments? I don't know if it's beneficial or not to have a lifetime agreement or, other than revisiting it every year or two, but.
No, at least they'd have to come back to us if they want to change the prices.
Yes. Okay, we need a motion to approve and accept this.
So.
Motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Open hour.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. And that brings us to approval of a bill. Just a couple sheets here, that's Monty, you have it? Thanks, Pat. Have a good day. Move to pull the bills. Motion by Stern. Second by Pillar. Discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Open hour.
Aye, motion carried, being adjourned. Thank you all.